Good afternoon. It's 4:30 PM on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. We will call the City Council Meeting of the City of New Ulm to order. Item number one is the consent agenda. Councillors, what are your wishes?
I so move.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 2.1 is a fireworks license.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of fireworks license for the American Promotional Events Incorporated DBA TNT Fireworks Incorporated 4003 Hilton Drive Florence, Alabama, to sell fireworks in the Walmart parking lot, 1720 Westridge Road, New Ulm, for the period beginning June 20th, 2025, ending July 5th, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item 2.2 is an amended liquor license extensions for spiking in the streets.
I'll offer the resolution to amend and authorize the extension of a liquor licenses for spiking in the street to include the intersections of First North Street and Minnesota Street and First North Street from Minnesota Street to the alley from August 1st at 8:00 AM till Sunday, August 3rd at 3:00 PM for the following B and L Bar and Sweet Heaven Tonics.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Christian.
Yes.
Councillor Wormka.
Yes.
Councillor Schmitz.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes. Motion carries. Item 2.3 is a Mauan's Bar liquor license extension for 2025 downtown events.
I'll offer the resolution authorizing Mauan's Bar to extend their liquor license for the following chamber-sponsored 2025 summer events to allow alcohol to be consumed, served, subject to conditions. Crazy Days, Minnesota Street from First North to Center from Friday, July 25th at 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Minnesota Street from Third North to First North from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM Saturday, July 26th. And First North Street from Minnesota to Alley from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Car and Bike Rollins, Minnesota Street from Third North to First South from 3:30 PM to 8:00 PM Saturdays, July 12th, August 16th, and September 13th. Spiking in the Streets, Minnesota Street from Second North to Center from Friday, August 1st at 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And Saturday, August 2nd at 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And First North closed from Minnesota to Alley. Oktoberfest, Minnesota Street from First North to Center Street on Friday, October 3rd at 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And Saturday, October 4th from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And Center Street from Broadway to Minnesota, including the Center, Minnesota intersections. Lastly, Parade of Lights, Minnesota Street from First South to Fourth North from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, November 28th.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Christian.
Yes.
Councillor Wormka.
Yes.
Councillor Schmitz.
Yes.
Councillor Mack.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes. Motion carries. Item 3.1 is summary of business conducted during board and commission meetings.
All right. I attended the EDA meeting. The main item was preliminary budget approval. The park meeting, we did receive an update on the comprehensive plan. From my understanding, the surveys are now out, and there won't be a lot of advertisement on how to get to those surveys for the general public. And further down the agenda, they'll be looking for approval for park replacement equipment and donations. One other item I did go to, most of you probably read it in the journal, that River Coalition meeting that was held over in Mankato. Very interested, very well represented with the DNR, Mindot, senators, some legislators. It was very interesting, being the river is in our backyard. They all know the issue. It's how do we fix it?
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
Last transportation meeting, we were notified, or we kind of knew this was coming, but due to circumstances beyond our control, we're not getting our electric buses. But a little bit later on the agenda here is a letter of support for propane low emission buses, for a letter of support from the council. So that's kind of where the avenue we're looking to go down, and also increasing to two buses in the future to make two separate bus routes. Ridership is very much so up in the last year. It's really kind of neat to see that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I've got nothing.
President and members, the Heritage Preservation Commission met yesterday. We continue planning to host the state convention in September with many local partners. It's coming together wonderfully. And then we did approve a facade, a slight signage change downtown here on Broadway for Wunderberg Collective. Wunderberg Collective consignment store coming into the former Gypsy Girl store here on Broadway. Just modest signage change on the glass window. And then they're going to be repainting the canopy black, which is the color it is now. That's it. And then cable TV has not met.
Thank you. Mayor? I have several things to report. First of all, on Thursday night, attended the public celebration at German Park for Jensen Motors and the Minnesota Valley Funeral Home for being recognized as Businesses of the Year. I'm sure those of you who attended will concur. It was a wonderful event. People were sitting everywhere in the park. It just showed off the park, as well as the Businesses of the Year. And congratulations to you, Eric. The CBB Committee, through them, I had ribbon cutting for the Cottonwood Valley Nature Preschool. What an interesting concept. This individual is doing a preschool for three to six-year-olds, and they will be outside most of the time. Her comment was, there's no such thing as bad weather. So that is something that's going to take place this summer, one session and maybe more. I attended an event for the Eagle Scouts. Two Eagle Scouts achieved that level, and gave out certificates of commendation on behalf of the City of New Ulm to Logan Booth and to Ryan Martenka. And congratulations to those two. Again, following up with CBB and wanting to know what's going on in New Ulm, I attended the roll-in on Saturday. Did anybody else have the opportunity to attend that? The energy downtown New Ulm, there were people everywhere. I was there a little before 3 o'clock, watching the vehicles back into place. But just the number of people, just milling back and forth, and we're not talking just the older generation that identifies with some of those old vehicles, but also young families with their childrens. We saw strollers, et cetera, et cetera. It was just a great night. On the New Ulm Partnership, which I participate in, the update there was there was some conversation about a proposed project. This hasn't been approved by the city, but looking at tiny or small houses. And so we had an update on that at that meeting. And also, some of you familiar with the CTE Center? Through District 88, we have now formed an informal advisory group. And what we're looking at is if we can play a role to support that education opportunity in the trades, and if there's a way that we can support it to help maximize the opportunities there. And then finally, Human Rights Commission had an individual present to us, from COPEL, I believe is how you pronounce it. It's a member-based organization that works to improve the quality of life for Latin families in Minnesota through building collective power, transforming systems, and creating opportunities. And the individual's presented to us as a commission, and we asked if he would come to New Ulm and present a program, a public program to our audience here. And so that is in the process of being scheduled, I believe, at the New Ulm Public Library. I don't have the date or the time, otherwise I would share that with you. And that completes my report.
Wow. Wonderful report. Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments? Thank you. Moving on, item 4.1. Under reports is Lincoln Park Playground Replacement. Mr. Shugel, thank you.
Thank you, Council President Becker, City Council. I'm going to pull up some visuals for this, so just bear with me one second. Okay, so looking for approval off of the state contract with the plan with Flagship Recreation to relocate and replace the Lincoln Park Playground two- to five-year-old section. I don't know what our problem is here. One second. There we go. So Lincoln Park Playground does see a lot of use from ages two to five. Just with the waiting pool in the area that's designed for your younger age kids, we see a lot of use for that age and that play equipment within that park. This plan, staff identified that there are a number of pieces in that two-to-five current totlot area that are either outdated or due for replacement. So this proposal looks at removing that whole two-to-five, this is the two-to-five play space here, removing this and the whole container and making that green space, and then adding some new play features to the existing play space. So these are a couple pictures of what this currently looks like at Lincoln Park. And then relocating over to the five-to-12 playground, which you see here. And this space right here would be slightly expanded to house that two-to-five play equipment. One of the strategies with this is long-term, by reducing that container, we do have yearly maintenance costs that with our both materials and maintenance to that, we're adding wood fiber to those playgrounds every year. So that would save us on some materials as well by reducing that container, but still enhancing that play experience at Lincoln Park. And the new piece looks like this. We are also proposing, and the item following this, is a playground replacement for Washington's Park. So by doing both items at the same time, we would be saving both installation costs and shipping costs by doing both of these at the same time. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this. One more note I will make is, in 2024, we did start Playground Syncing Fund, and the funds provided in that syncing fund would be used for this if approved.
Would it be the same equipment at both parks? Like the same little kid's clubhouse-looking thing, or no?
So the next item is for a five-to-12.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering. Yeah, you were saying doubled.
If there's no questions, again, the parking rec, you'd ask to be recommended approval. I'm on a motion to approve state contract 218091, and plan with Flagship Recreation to relocate and replace the Lincoln Playground two-to-five-year-old in the amount of $28,218.86.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item 4.2 is in regards to Washington Park Playground Replacement. Mr. Shugel.
Thank you, Council President Becker, City Council. This is to approve the state contract number 218091, to replace the Washington Park Playground, five-to-12-year-old playground in the amount of $178,817.17. Washington Park is our oldest playground in the system, installed in fall of 1999. Again, this playground is heavily used. This is a neighborhood park, but it sees features that bring both the neighborhood use, it brings, there's a school, Newax is located right there, sees a lot of use from that. But then with the waiting pool, ball field, tennis courts, it brings in more than your typical neighborhood use. So heavily-used playground. Staff, again, has identified in our replacement schedule, with this being the oldest playground, that it was time to look at a replacement here. In this picture, you'll see right over the blue area that's missing a slide. At a certain point, we're unable to replace certain parts as these playground systems age. This is one example of that. With this proposed replacement, we again are recommending the shrinking of the container, while, again, with the saving of some of the materials that we yearly spend, maintenance costs, but then, again, still enhancing the play options within by shrinking that container. You'll see a lot of open space with this container from these different angles. I want to point out that this smaller playground here was a donation. This is a newer piece. This would stay and be still in good working order, so we would leave that until its useful life is up. Once its useful life was up, we would not recommend additional replacement for that. Do want to point out one slide here showing what the container would look like. So currently, you can see this area is where that donated play piece is. If you look over here, the new proposal of shrinking this, this whole area would then shrink down with the container size of the new play features. These are some of the pieces that you would see. Again, looking for unique features to try to hit all ability levels and age levels within this new playground. Flagship Recreation did provide us with three proposals that we brought to New Ulm Area Catholic Schools that the school system uses those often. So we presented those to different classrooms and let them pick out of the three concepts. And this was the concept that they did choose for, that had the most votes. Any questions on any of this? Again, that Playground Syncing Fund currently with the 2025 contribution is $325,000 allocated right now.
That was a fun idea, getting the kids involved in the voting on that. I like that concept. And hearing no questions, I'll make a motion to approve state contract number 218091, and plan with Flagship Recreation to replace the Washington Park Playground, the five-to-12-year age range, in the amount of $178,817.17.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just was curious to the lifespan of those, you know, and what we'd be looking at, because we have a lot of parks and a lot, you know, I know that's why we're putting money in the playground fund, as its own separate item outside of parking lot. But I'm just curious.
Well, you look at this one, it's 26 years old, our current playground there. That's a pretty good lifespan. We, you know, we do yearly preventative maintenance on these. We're replacing parts as we go. So 20 years is a pretty good run, but we're seeing, you know, we have some others coming up on that 20-year time period here, too. So again, that's why that contribution is there, and recommend it each year to be able to not have to replace three or four of them at the same time.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Any additional discussion?
President, members, I might have another question also. Director Shugel, did we look at the possibility of poured-in-place surfacing as opposed to staying with the wood fiber surfacing that requires annual replacement or additional fiber? I know that poured-in-place surfacing, like we have at Herman Heights and German Park, are much less maintenance. But I know they're much more money also.
Right. Great question. Councillor Schmitz, we did look at two options. We actually looked at the poured-in-place and turf surfacing, the natural grass surfacing that is, we're seeing more in playgrounds. Per the square footage of even this reduced container, it almost doubled the price of what this playground would be. So recommending to stay with the wood fiber in this area.
Is that something that could be considered after this is put in, or would that be something that you'd kind of need to decide on before?
Surfacing can change after install. Now, it's harder if you're going to change, put the surfacing in first, like a poured-in-place. You'd have to rip that out. But with the wood fiber, we would be able to come in and put a turf surface or a poured-in-place in.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions, comments? Great. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 4.3 is regarding City Charter Commission recommendations regarding home rule charter.
All right. Council President, councillors, we have a couple minor changes to the charter that did go before the Charter Commission and were approved as stated. The city attorney is on the line in case you have any questions, but I'll go through these one by one. So under Section 28, Duties and Powers of the Mayor, there were some inconsistencies between that section and Section 71, which actually spelled out what the veto powers of the mayor were. So we decided to take out the language of vetoing in this section and just put the language to refer to Section 71 for those powers. In Section 60, this simple language change or word change, we removed the word "members," and this is in regards to special meetings. We removed the word "members," even though that would refer to council members, but just put the word "council" in there. So it says, councillors. Under Section 66, Procedures on Ordinances, we do not issue business licenses. So we took that out and just put new licenses from the city or renewals thereof, and then just spelled out, or got rid of email and just put electronic notifications in there. So made it a little bit easier. For Section 87 and 88, this basically removed the police commission's ability or approval of removing a police officer from their position. Both under 87 and 88, the police commission will still be involved in the hiring, you know, giving their recommendation and moving that forward. But we felt that the police chief and/or I should be able to remove officers without calling a meeting. Per the police officer's contract, though, grievances will still go before the police commission if they do have them. Section 101 is the library board. We've been looking at commissions just in general, and I know the mayor and I will be presenting at a future work-study sessions on recommendations for the different boards and commissions. But this one is in the charter, so the Charter Commission looked at it. And we're just simply removing, reducing the number from nine to seven. No one on the current library board will be kicked off when they term out. Those positions just won't be filled. Spoke with the library director, and she was fine moving down from nine to seven. And then Section 180, just didn't have a title, so we labeled it "public nuisance." And then 221, under Duties of the City Manager, this doesn't affect my duties. This is specifically the section that has to do with the public utilities and who the Public Utilities Commission needs to appoint. And there, we're just having them point the utility director, and the utility director would be able to appoint the department heads.
For the PUC.
Yep.
Thank you. I've read through the charter many times. I'm very thankful for the work that the Charter Commission does. And we do this every year, kind of look at just language cleanup.
Yes, we have to convene every year. They don't necessarily have to make changes, but they do have to at least do a cursory review.
And some of these are cleanup, just cleanup things and other things that make sense. So I'll make a motion to receive the City Charter Commission recommendations to amend the following charter sections. Charter Amendment, Section 28, Duties and Powers of the Mayor. Charter Amendment, Section 60, Special Meetings. Charter Amendment, Section 66, Procedure on Ordinances. Charter Amendment 87, and that was Police Department and Section 88, Police Commission. Charter Amendment, Section 101, the Library Board. Charter Amendment, Section 180, Public Nuisances. And Charter Amendment 221, Duties of the City Manager. I believe that's all. And conduct the first consideration of the City Charter Amendment ordinances in addition to setting the public hearing date for Tuesday, July 15th, 2025, and directing public notice of the hearing to be published pursuant to the statutory requirements.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
President and councillors, just one quick item I want to add is that, you know, what we're doing with the library board is something that we've previously done to the Park and Rec Commission. Park and Rec Commission was nine members, and it was reduced to seven members a few years back. And I'm not aware of any concerns or problems related to that reduction in volunteer personnel. That's it.
Fantastic. Thank you. Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Item 4.4 is the annual financial report for fiscal year end December 31st, 2024.
Being this one's hot off the press from an hour ago, I'm going to receive the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, for the City of New Ulm and the New Ulm Public Utilities Commission.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Under Old Business, item 5.1, Nicollet County Bridge, number 08520, is the cost-share agreement. Mr. Stodheim.
Madam President, city councillors, as you may recall, back in March, you authorized a professional services contract with Wedseth to develop project plans and specifications for the 2025 Bridge Number 08520 Slopes and Skour Stabilization Project. As part of that meeting, I made a note that this would be coming to you at a future date. So this cost-share agreement really solidifies what we've been doing with Nicollet County on bridge projects, on any past bridge project. We share those associated costs on a 50/50 split. But we never had an agreement executed for those projects. So at the recommendation from Mr. Greenwood, the Nicollet County engineer, we went ahead and working with city attorney and the Nicollet County attorney, we have prepared the agreement that's within the packet today. It's agreeable to all parties and really just formalizes what we've been doing on past projects. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much.
I'm not hearing any concerns, so I'm going to offer a motion to approve the cost-share agreement with Nicollet County for the Bridge 2025, Number 08520, Slope and Skour Stabilization Project.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 5.2, Ordinance Number 2025-100, Second Consideration in Zoning, Mr. Nisley.
All right. Good evening, Council President, councillors. John Nisley, planner with the City of New Ulm. This is to conduct the second consideration and adoption of ordinance 2025-100, amending Chapter 3.2 of Appendix A of the City Code of the City of New Ulm relative to zoning in said city. This is for This is for the Land Haven PUD project. The property described is an exhibit A of the ordinance and will be rezoned from planned industrial, that's the I1 zoning district, to planned unit development district number three, that's PUD-3. Property is legally described as lot one, block one, airport industrial third edition, and the property is to be planted as the Land Haven addition in the future. Property is generally located west of Jacob Street, north of Walmart and Barron's Boulevard. This is the location of the Barn Dominium and Storage condo project. You all saw the general development plan for it at the last meeting. So this is the second consideration. The first consideration was take, took place here in front of council on June 3rd. If approved by the council, it would be published in the journal on June 21st and then would take effect July 21st or 30 days from publication. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Nisley.
I'll motion to conduct the second consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2025-100, amending chapter 3.2 of appendix A of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to zoning in said city, Land Haven Planned Unit Development District.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 5.2, ordinance number 2025-100, second, oh, nope, sorry, 2025-101, second consideration of zoning.
This is the, to conduct the second consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2025-101, again, amending chapter 3.2 of appendix A of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to zoning in said city. This is the Highland Apartments Planned Unit Development Project. The property described as an exhibit A of this ordinance and would be rezoned from agricultural open space, that's A-OS, to high density comma planned unit development district number two, that's R4, comma PUD number two. Staff would recommend that we would change that to planned unit development district number two, simply to be consistent with our other planned unit development numbering systems. So we have a planned unit development number one, PUD1. We have Land Haven, which you just read, which is PUD number three. We'd like to change this just simply to PUD number two. The property is legally described as part of outlot 194, 195, 196, and 197. The property is to be planted as lots one through four and 10th North Street, Highland Apartments Edition. The property is generally located west of North Highland Avenue and south of New Ulm High School and north of 7th North Street. Again, this is the proposed 148 apartment unit project being proposed by Keepers Construction Incorporated. If approved by the council, this would be published in the journal this Saturday on June 21st and would go into effect on July 21st, 2025. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Nisley.
I'm going to offer a motion to conduct the second consideration and adopt ordinance number 2025-101, amending chapter 3.2, appendix A of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to zoning in said city.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 6.1, under new business, alley block 182, north of Center Street, petition for improvements. I will disclose that while I am listed on the petition, I am not and have not been a property owner of any of those properties, and so therefore I will be voting on, making a vote on this unless there's any objections from council. Thank you. Item 6.1.
Right. Thank you, Madam President, City Councilors. So this petition was originally prepared back in September of 2021 at the request from a property owner about the project. This petition was received on June 3rd of this year. The petition has signatures from 57% of those owners with frontage on the project based on front footage, based on parcels. Six out of the 12 parcel owners have signed this petition requesting improvements. City code, excuse me, city code allows for the filing of any such petition, allows the city council to set a time and place for the petition to be examined, heard, and considered by council. So today we are requesting council set the date for the public hearing for Tuesday, August 5th at 4:30 PM.
President, councilors, I would like to receive the petition for grading aggregate based storm sewer if warranted, bituminous surfacing, seven inch concrete alley approach pavement, miscellaneous removals and restoration as necessary to construct the residential pavement section on the alley in block 182, north of Center Street, and set the date for the public hearing for 4:30 PM on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 6.2, New Ulm Fire Department Relief Association Pension Benefit Level, Mr. Stodheim.
All right. Thank you, Madam President, City Councilors. Joe Stodheim, Secretary, New Ulm Fire Department Relief Association. So relief association had a benefit, a pension benefit level study completed with its biannual actuarial evaluation completed by VIA. And that study determined the feasibility of a pension benefit increase. Our current funding level as an association is 155%. So meaning if we were to dissolve as an association today, there would be 55% of the funds remaining after everybody would be paid out. Our current pension amount is $6,750 per year of service for the active members of the association. Our funding level is up from the 2023 funding level, and that was at 115%. And that included an adoption of a pension level increase in 2023 as well. So that shows our, our investment strategy is working quite well and increased our funding level about 40% over the two-year period. Our proposed increase is to $8,000 per year of service, which is option three in the attachment for its active members. This does not increase the pension level for our four monthly retire, retired members. By enacting that pension increase, we would reduce our funding level to 134% per the study conducted by VIA. The proposed increase keeps the association sufficiently funded and provides some cushion for fluctuations in investment performance. We included a chart with other relief associations, their pension per year, municipal contributions, funding ratios, and 2023 rate of return. You'll see if you look at the rates of return, our associations' investments are outperforming all of our peers that we included as part of the comparison. Just an item to note, the pension benefit level is an item that the fire chief uses during recruitment. It helps with retention as well for some of our more experienced firefighters. So this pension benefit increase was recommended for approval by the association and by the association board of directors. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
President and councilors, I'd like to offer the resolution to revise appendix A of the New Ulm Fire Department Relief Association bylaws, changing the pension benefit level to $8,000 per year of service for active members of the New Ulm Fire Department Relief Association to become effective January 1st, 2026.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
One item, Madam President, as you heard Mr. Stodheim say, I'm still on the monthly pension. This does not affect my pension, so I will be voting on this.
Thank you so much.
For the record.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, call the roll, please.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Warmka?
Yes.
Counselor Schmitz?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
President Vetker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Thank you.
Counsel.
Yes. Item 6.3 is public hearing date for noise variance for New Ulm Chamber of Commerce Crazy Days.
I'll motion to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, July 1, 2025, at 4:30 PM for request from the New Ulm Chamber of Commerce for a noise variance to permit amplified sound and music during crazy days on Minnesota Street between First North and Center Streets on Friday, Third North and Center Street on Saturday for the following. Friday, July 25, 2025, from 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and Saturday, July 26, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 6.4 is a public hearing date for noise variance for New Ulm Chamber of Commerce spiking in the street.
I'll offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, July 1, 2025, at 4:30 PM for request from the New Ulm Chamber of Commerce for a noise variance to permit amplified sound, music during spiking in the street, Minnesota Street between Second North and Center Streets for the following. Friday, August 1, 2025, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and Saturday, August 2nd, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a comment. What a great event. I think this is going into our third year, and didn't we like, or they double the amount of participation last year?
They're doubling the size, too.
It's just amazing. So support this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 6.5, New Ulm Battery Cannon Shoot Military Appreciation Night.
President, councilors, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the New Ulm Battery to conduct a cannon shoot at Johnson Park, 500 North German Street after the National Anthem to fire up to three rounds from the cannon in celebration of Military Appreciation Night on Sunday, June 29, 2025, at 5:30 PM.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 6.6 is support for low or no emission grant program.
Counselor Warmka had alluded to earlier, this is a letter for, letter of support for the low or no emissions grant program through the Federal Transit Administration. Because of cold weather, the electric buses wouldn't have the range that we needed. So we did try and use that current grant that we had to do propane buses, but that was deemed an ineligible expense. They really wanted to hold, hold to the electric, but they did come forward with a zero or no, or low emission grant. And so Brown County Transit would like to apply through this through the state. This would help us kind of complete our route, get us buses that are low, low emission, which would help meet Minnesota's emission standards or carbon standards, and also would help us complete our route, as Eric had also alluded to, to getting two smaller routes. So it makes it more efficient for people to get around. We can actually hit more stops, have two for lack, you know, without mapping it out two half hour routes that meet in downtown where you can jump on the other bus and go other, and go onto the other route. So I would ask for your approval of this letter of support for this grant so we can apply.
I'll motion to approve the letter of support endorsing Brown County's application to the Federal Transit Administration for two propane buses under the low or no emission grant program.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I have a couple of questions. I've been approached about this particular project, the busing, with only good feedback. In here, it talks, there's, there's two points where it talks about constructing new transportation facilities to accommodate the low emission buses. My question is, is there anything in future planning to look at the respective stops and having some kind of improvements at those locations with a shelter or with seating to accommodate those in wait for the bus?
I would say, yes, that's probably in the future plans, but as of right now, as we're still mapping out the route, there's not, it doesn't really make sense unless we know there's a route or a stop that's physically going to be there as we manipulate stuff. So once we can nail down what the two routes would be, that's when we'd start looking at potential benches. There is one spot I know at Emerson Union, they're potentially looking at doing a bench there through a donation route or something like that, because that's been a fairly requested one. But those stops will eventually get something down the road when it's more finalized.
And the, the shelter issues were more with the electric bus, that we needed a more insulated building to house the electric buses. With this, we're, we're not there. We don't need that. It's not as big of a need, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
Just one other note, these buses actually wouldn't cost us anything. The state is covering the match portion for, for this.
Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item number 6.7 is regards to a loan to Franklin New Ulm LLC.
Yeah, so this loan is kind of unique. So rebound was the initial loan applicant for this loan when they did the lamplighter. They are no longer moving forward with that lamplighter project at this point and would like to transfer that money over to remodel the Franklin building and get that up and running. They do meet all the criteria. It's under 30% of the total project cost. They do have equity in that, and they're pretty much ready to go with the remodeling and improvements to the Franklin Event Center at this point in time.
I would love to see the lamplighter get revived, but I also want to see this business come back, back to life. So I'll offer a resolution authorizing a loan with conditions to Franklin New Ulm LLC in the amount of $149,999 from the city's revolving loan fund for building acquisition, working capital, and remodeling barring any significant changes.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Chris, do we have any timeline when this might be occupied?
I would say probably in the next year or so it'll be, be up and running. I mean, probably sooner rather than later, but most of the improvements are going to be interior, so they'll be able to work through the winter, so.
Okay.
Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Warmka?
Yes.
Counselor Schmitz?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
And President Vetker.
Yes, that motion carries. Item 6.8 is fire department donation.
I'll offer the resolution to accept a $500 donation from Jeannie Crutch.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Warmka?
Yes.
Counselor Schmitz?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
President Vetker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Our last item of business today is item 6.9, park and recreation donations.
President, councilors, I'd like to offer a resolution to accept the following donations offered to the city of New Ulm through the Park and Recreation Department for the identified purposes. And that is $42.98 for shrubbery in German Park from Jan Jacobs honoring Marlene Marty, and then from the New Ulm Junior Baseball Association out at North Park for dugout improvements and scoreboard improvements, $22,000 for a grand total of $22,042.98.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Warmka?
Yes.
Counselor Schmitz?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
President Vetker.
Yes, the motion carries. With no additional business today, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. (applause)